Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We would like to call the meeting to order. Bart, if you could call roll, please.
Ms. Cotter?
Here.
Mrs. Davidson?
Here.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Here.
Mr. Velardo?
Here.
Mr. Bird?
Here. If you'll join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening again, ladies and gentlemen. Vice President Rick Velardo will be taking the podium for our first agenda topic of district highlights and recognitions, and if I could ask board members to please proceed to the front of the desk area. How about a hand for our technician? When we get to do district highlights and recognitions, this is just a deep privilege of ours, and the first thing that we would like to do is we would like to honor and recognize our state reflection winners. You see them seated up here, and in order to recognize them, I'd like to ask the parent council representatives Sarah Strauss and Jill French to come forward to introduce the winners.
Good evening, President Bird, members of the Westerville Board of Education, Dr. Kellogg, Mr. Griffith, executive staff, and distinguished guests. We are happy to have you here tonight. My name is Sarah Strauss. Lisa Wood, Jill French, and I had the pleasure of chairing the 2015-2016 National Reflections Program this year. Westerville Parent Council extends their thanks to you for taking time to recognize these 15 artists tonight. This year, 355 students from around the district participated. 169 students participated at the district level from three middle schools and 12 elementary schools, emphasizing that the arts are an integral part of our children's development. The recognition you are giving tonight demonstrates your continued support, so again, thank you. The PTA Reflections Program began in 1969 in Colorado. In more than its 40-year history, the National Reflections Program has encouraged millions of students across the nation to create works of art based on a chosen theme. This annual program encourages students in preschool through grade 12 to participate by submitting works of art in six different categories. Those categories include dance, choreography, film production, literature, music composition, photography, and visual arts. This year's theme was "Let Your Imagination Fly." So, how did we get here tonight? Well, winning entries from each of our Westerville Elementary and Middle Schools advanced to district judging. We were permitted to send 57 of our district winners to state judging, and 15 of those entries were recognized at the state level with either Award of Excellence, Award of Achievement, Award of Merit, and Honorable Mention. Tonight, we are proud to honor these 15 artists from our district who placed at the Ohio State PTA level. The five first-place winners who received Award of Excellence will advance to the national level, and we wish them all the best in the national judging. So let's begin and recognize these talented artists. Jill French would like to recognize the artists, so thanks, Jill.
Thanks, Sarah. I'm going to announce the winners by category. Our first category is dance choreography, and our first individual unfortunately could not be here this evening, but we'd still like to recognize Arissa Francis for taking an honorable mention in the Primary Division of Dance Choreography, and she is a student from Mark Twain Elementary. Our second individual in the Primary Division of Dance Choreography is Alicia Keenan, and she is from Hanby Elementary, and she received an honorable mention. Twain Elementary. Anila received an Award of Excellence. And lastly, in Intermediate Dance Choreography, we have Elizabeth Bridge from Robert Frost Elementary, and she received an honorable mention. In the Primary Division of Film Production, we have Ava Marie Hedrick from Emerson Elementary, and she received an Award of Outstanding Achievement. Also, in the Primary Division of Film Production, we have Amber Loyah Sotomayor, and she is from Hanby Elementary, and she received an Award of Merit. Lastly, in Primary Film Production, we have James Scarborough from Mark Twain Elementary. James received an honorable mention. In the Intermediate Film Production category, we have Alexander Hedrick from Emerson Elementary, and he received an Award of Excellence. In the Primary Division, we have Alexis Ross from Alcott Elementary, and she received an honorable mention. Also, from Alcott Elementary, in the Intermediate category of Literature, we have Jenna Bedeck, and she received an honorable mention. In Primary Music Composition, we have Addie Gorgiolo from Hanby Elementary, and she received an Award of Excellence. For Intermediate Music Composition, we have Bennett Kizer from Emerson Elementary, and Bennett received an Award of Excellence. Next, we have Intermediate Photography, Lily Vettameyer from Robert Frost, and she received an Award of Excellence. For Intermediate Visual Arts, we have Rohan Maulwaker from Emerson Elementary, and he received an Award of Merit. Our last individual is for Intermediate Visual Arts, Alicia Deng, also from Emerson Elementary, and she received an honorable mention. To conclude this presentation, we would like to say congratulations to all our artists, and again, thank you to the board for your continued support. We want to encourage all the children to participate in next year's Reflections Program where the theme is "What Is Your Story?" So to all our winners, keep being creative and expressing yourself with your art. Thank you.
The arts are an integral part of the educational process here in Westerville, and we would be remiss if we didn't thank not only the kids for their artistic efforts, but also to the teachers and the staff that work with them so diligently in our community that supports the arts. So one more time, why don't you give them a wonderful round of applause? Based on the picture, you may know that the next thing we would like to recognize is the Westerville South Boys Basketball State Championship Team. And at this time, I would like to ask Buck Weaver, the South Athletic Director, to come forward to introduce the team and the coaches. Buck Weaver.
First of all, congratulations to all you students. What an excellent accomplishment for you guys to be here tonight and be recognized for all of your awesome things. Good job. Before we bring our coaches and players up, on behalf of Westerville South, I would like to thank our entire community for all the ongoing support. You guys are absolutely awesome. Also, thank you to our board for the invitation tonight. We are absolutely honored to be here. We'll start with our assistant coaches to bring you guys up. Coach Palumbo, come on up.
Coach Brad Burris was unable to be here. Our next assistant, Trevor Kilmeier. The rest of our coaching staff was unable to be here, but I'm going to read through their names. Tim Brewer, Mike Wozlick, Jermaine Geis, Steve Blocker, and David McCormick. Now for our players unable to be here tonight, Jelani Rogers, Anthony Mills, Jordan Humphrey, and Hafiz Turey, they were unable to be here. Our first player here tonight is Andre Wesson. Come on up. And you guys will stay up here. Next player was unable to be here, Elton Sonnyway. Next player, Dalen Haney. Our next player was also unable to be here, David Fitzgerald. Our next player is Antoine Smith. Next player is Caleb Wesson. Next player is Cameron Caldwell. Next player is Jake Garrison. And our last player on the list was also unable to be here, and that's Max Barber. And last but most certainly not least, our head coach, Ed Kahlo.
When the youngsters came up, I noticed that most of the board members, you know, held their head and looked at them real close. I was expecting some of that for you guys, too. You want to go back through the line and get that? Awesome. How about a huge hand for this Westerville South Boys Basketball State Championship If it's okay with you all, I'm going to have you stand up here for just one more second because what I'd like to do is call to the podium Ed Kahlo, Buck Weaver, and Steve Anderson. No, that's neck. You're reading that, aren't you? Okay, we'll bring it back up. We have a resolution of commendation that I would like to read. Why don't you come and stand out a little bit closer here? You're afraid, aren't you? This was scarier than the games, wasn't it? Westerville City Schools Resolution of Commendation for Ed Kahlo. Whereas in the past 29 seasons, the Westerville South High School Boys Basketball Team led by Coach Ed Kahlo has emerged as one of the best programs in central Ohio, producing all state players, players who went on to compete and succeed at the collegiate level, and numerous league, district, and regional titles. And whereas, after a successful regular season of play, South competed in a semifinal game against Pickerington Central on March 9, winning by a score of 78-66. And whereas, the Wildcats continued their winning ways before a sellout crowd at Ohio Dominican University in a Division One Regional Final on Saturday, March 12, where they enjoyed a 68-59 victory over Gehanna Lincoln and advanced to their second straight state final four. And whereas, on March 18, during the Division One State Semifinal, Westerville South, running the fast break with abandon -- I'm just reading it as it's written here -- running the fast break with abandon, shot 62.2 percent from the field, and led from the start in an 87-78 victory over Garfield Heights before 10,685 at Value City Arena, advancing for the second year in a row to the state final. And whereas, on Saturday night, March 19, hundreds of Westerville South fans erupted into euphoric celebration at Value City Arena as they watched senior guard Jordan Humphrey make a driving leaner in the lane with just 2.3 seconds left in the game to give the Wildcats a nail-biting 57-58 victory over Lima Senior, earning the school's first state title. You all did that. Therefore be it resolved that Westerville City Schools Board of Education and Superintendent commend Ed Kahlo, his coaching staff, and the varsity boys basketball team for a remarkable and historical season of play that will never be forgotten, April 11, 2016. Congratulations to all of you. I just want to just say that we had great players. These young men are outstanding in so many different ways. I love being around them. They're great citizens. They do the right thing every day, and they practice so hard. I'm very proud of them. There was only one quarter in the whole tournament, which was the first quarter of the district championship game, where we were not ahead. These guys did the job from the first minute to the last minute and were truly outstanding. And as I said before, I'm very proud of them. Very humble to stand before you, great assistant coaches, and there was no miracles here. We have great players, so thank you very much. I'm going to invite the guys to go ahead and be seated, but Ed, sorry, you're still here, and I'm going to invite at this time Dr. Nancy Nestor Baker, who has a commendation that she would like to read.
I'm standing in tonight for Representative Patrick Teaberry, who was unable to be here, but contacted me immediately after the great win and asked if he could participate in any recognition. Unfortunately, he wasn't able to be here, but he did ask me to read this and present this to you on his behalf. So, from the United States House of Representatives, a proclamation recognizing Westerville South Boys Basketball on the occasion of winning the Division One State Championship. I am pleased to congratulate the 2015-2016 Westerville South High School Boys Basketball Team on winning the Division One State Championship. Throughout its history, Westerville South High School has held the reputation of academic and athletic excellence. By capturing this year's state championship, the 2015-2016 Wildcat Boys Basketball Team have added their mark to the school's outstanding legacy. Achievements such as this are earned only through countless hours of practice, hard work, and dedication. The players and coaching staff have set a new standard toward which future Wildcats can aspire. The entire Westerville South community can be proud of the team's performance and their continuation of the tradition of excellence established by the many alumni before them, like you. On behalf of the citizens of Ohio's 12th Congressional District, I am proud to recognize the Westerville South High School Boys Basketball Team for their championship season. Presented this 11th day of April, 2016, Patrick J. Teaberry, Representative to Congress, and it does have the seal from the Congress. Thank you.
I'm going to ask the board members to stay where you are for just a moment, and yes, you're still here. You're going to pay me back for this later, aren't you? President Bird would like to offer a word for just a moment.
Board members, if I could ask for a motion for a resolution for endorsement?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Ladies and gentlemen, a resolution for endorsement for the Ed Kahlo Basketball Court, if I may read it, please. Rick Velardo made, and Nancy Nestor Baker seconded the following resolution. Whereas in the past 29 seasons, the Westerville South High School Boys Basketball Team led by Coach Ed Kahlo has emerged as one of the best programs in central Ohio, producing all state players, players who went on to compete and succeed at the collegiate level, and numerous league, district, and regional titles. And whereas, Coach Kahlo has guided the Wildcats to a 437 and 226 record while winning 11 league championships, five district championships, and their second regional championship this past season. He has been named League Coach of the Year 10 times, AP District Coach of the Year 4 times, AP State Coach of the Year in 1996 and 2010, as well as 2015 All-Metro Coach of the Year, and USA Today Ohio Coach of the Year. And whereas, Coach Kahlo led the Westerville South Wildcats Boys Basketball Team to its first state title and will be forever remembered as the most winning basketball coach in South's school history, therefore be it resolved that the Westerville City Schools Board of Education and Superintendent recognize Ed Kahlo's legacy of excellence by proclaiming that the Basketball Court at Westerville South High School, upon Ed Kahlo's retirement from coaching, be known as the Ed Kahlo Basketball Court. Bart, if you will call the roll. Ms. Cotter?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Bird?
Absolutely, yes. Board members, you may, yes.
So we have one more thing. Mayor Kathy Papouzi, on April 22nd, is going to have Coach Ed Kahlo Day for the city.
On which day? Say it again. April 22nd, the mayor will proclaim Ed Kaho, Coach Ed Kahlo Day. I'll say, so my understanding is you're all supposed to wear red that day? Those of you that have the red noses, I dare you to wear those. I'm going to ask the board members to go ahead and be seated, and the only thing I will add is I know, Coach Kahlo, that you would be the first to say that the gentlemen seated next to you, and those that have traveled with you, whether a couple years or all 29, are deeply a part of the honor that is in your name, but certainly is a part of that legacy, and I suspect you would say a part of that cloud of witnesses would also be the players, be they starters or folks that just contributed in some way. And so, we are honored to honor you in part because of that humble, authentic nature. And so, we are honored to honor you, in part, because of that humble, authentic nature. So, thank you all for being here tonight, for all of the reflection winners and all of your artwork. Please remain artists. Keep at it. We are excited to see you back here in years to come. Guys that are going to be on the team next year, I can't make any promises, but we would love to see you back here. And for those of you that are going on to play in other places or just to make a difference in the community, we want to thank you for being here. And all the staff and administration from South High School, a school we are very proud to say is a part of the Westerville City School District. So, one more hand for all of them, and you all can go and get your picture taken.[652.41][652.41](applause)
So, Rick, if I can, Coach Kelo, the board does have a request to make of you. Our preference would be that you pack in about 10 more state titles before you decide to retire. This is not our ask for you to leave. We want you to stay. All right?
We want to make that very clear.[671.82][671.82](laughter)
Folks, we'll let the room clear, and then we will proceed with the remainder of the All right, ladies and gentlemen, thank you for participating with us in those great celebrations of our students and staff. We'll move directly into our agenda this evening. First agenda item is Agenda Item 4, Board Meeting Minutes, approval of the minutes of March 7 and March 22, as presented. Any questions, concerns, or issues about minutes?
No.
Excellent. We'll move to the next agenda item. Reports, there are none this evening. Public comments, Agenda Item 6.01, we have not had anyone sign up for board comments this evening. So, we will move to Agenda Item 7, 7.01. It would be a resolution for the necessity for the substitution of an emergency tax levy. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Excellent. And Bart, will you be presenting?
Yes. Mr. President, members of board, this is the first reading, which does require a resolution. I know sometimes we do first readings for board approval that do not require, but this is one first reading that is required. It's part of the statute that it takes two readings to do, put a levy on the ballot. This is the first reading of a substitute emergency tax levy. This is not a new levy. It is a renewal of an existing levy. The language you see on here is currently, and it was existing, that it collected $16,540,000. The object that I need you to do tonight as a Board of Education is to approve this levy. This then allows me to take it to the county auditor to proceed for the second step.
Which the second step will be to assign millage?
Correct.
Correct. And then to bring it back for a second reading?
Correct.
Okay. And then once the second reading is approved, then that will be submitted to Franklin County Board of Education?
Franklin County Board of Elections.
Sorry, yes.
It's due by August 10.
Gotcha.
But we can submit it once the second reading is approved. It's my understanding that we will probably bring the second reading, I should have it ready to bring back to you by the first meeting in May, to put that on there, as long as the board requires to do that. We will bring it back probably at the second, excuse me, first meeting in May for the second reading of this issue.[845.29][845.29](pause) What else would you like to know?
Any additional questions, comments? Hearing none, I do have a few. So, for everyone in attendance tonight, and for those watching us on TV or online, I'd like to share that we've added a feedback link to the homepage of our district website that you can use to share your thoughts about the replacement levy. We're very interested in hearing your feedback as we begin this process. We're also very interested in receiving and reviewing the kinds of questions that we can expect throughout the months leading up to the November election, particularly because it's the first time we will be asking our community to consider approving this type of ballot issue. While we won't be able to respond to everyone individually, please know that we do plan to identify common themes that emerge and share information with the greater community through various communication channels and formats. Recently, our treasurer, Bart Griffith, published a guest article in the local newspaper about the recommendation of the Fiscal Review Committee and how the replacement levy works. There was something in that article that struck me, and I want to bring attention to it again this evening. According to the district's history of voted millage going back nearly 60 years, never before has our school system gone nine or 10 years while making only one request of residents to renew an existing or approve new operating millage. It's nine or 10 years since the last time, and that's the opportunity in front of us today. Mr. Griffith referred to it as a new fiscal era for the district, and I think he is absolutely right. I believe I can speak for everyone up here when I say that we hope everyone will take some time to educate themselves about this issue and to please share your thoughts with us along the way. The important journey upon which we are preparing to embark, the one that puts us on the road to a new fiscal era, is one that we do not want to take alone. It begins tonight, and we want our community with us every step of the way.
Couple of points that I didn't make. One of the reasons that we are doing a substitute emergency levy, and I know we talked about in the past, is that it still captures the rollback and the owner-occupied credit. If for some reason the district does not decide to, you know, follow through with this levy and put one on in the future, you lose that credit. So, this levy automatically keeps that because it's a renewal, not new. The other thing that's different with this levy, in the past, in the past it was an emergency levy. It collected a specific dollar amount. This levy will collect that exact same specific dollar amount, but will capture any new construction that happens in the district beginning January 1, 2017. This levy, even though we're doing it now, by law, we're allowed to do it at least one year prior because it is an emergency levy. Most levies, if we want to put on a normal levy, we have to do it in the same year that we're going to collect it, as far as the next year goes. But because it's an emergency levy, I had recommended we do this in November so that you get one extra try in case you need it. But by passing this levy, or approval, if we pass it in November, it still is not collected until January 1, 2018. We're trying to do this for planning purposes. Okay? So, it is different, but it's the same.
I think the main thing here is no new taxes.
Correct.
And to save the 12.5 percent on the homestead rollback.
Homestead and owner-occupied credit.
Sorry, sorry, sorry. You got me confused on the terminology.
So, but yeah, it is a good thing. It's not a new tax. That's what we have to make sure, we make sure everybody understands. This is just a renewal. It's not new.
Correct.
And just to clarify, it's really not attached to the homestead. We sometimes use that word, but it's really not attached to that homestead. I just don't want, I don't want people to be confused out there.
The homestead.
That's a different kind of animal.
But this thing, this doesn't affect that at all.
Right. This is essentially, but what the flip side of that, that people really do need to capture, is that if we do it this way, there is the potential of capturing, for many, the 12.5 percent.
Yeah.
If we, because it's a continuation. That's just my word.
Well, that's the other point I didn't make. This is the continuing levy. In the past, we did a five-year levy. It was just for five years. That's why we're bringing up today. Under the substitute rule, you can, you could have made it up to 10 years, but you can also make it continuing. That's the other thing with this levy. It's a renewal of a current levy with a few parameters that change. One, it captures new construction, and one is continuing.
Yeah. And that was my second point, the capturing new construction. That's a critical piece to put. I just wanted to make sure we clarified the language. That's all.
Yes.
Thank you.
So, as we're drawing lines under things that I particularly want people to remember, because we are asking for a continuing levy, or plan to ask for continuing, under the current state law, that does protect that 12.5 percent. With current state law, if we let that lapse, that goes away. So, this is actually a way to save taxpayers a significant amount of money over time. That's my underscore.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Any additional?
It's with a new name tag, right? The substitute levy, that's what it will be called.
Yes.
The substitute levy, no new taxes, maintain the rollback.
Correct.
All on one.
I love that. Let's do that all, and we're going to have that all on our T-shirts.
Yeah, that's right. Run around.
And new construction.
And new construction, yes, that's right.
Yes, gathering all that. So, we can create opportunities for children. Absolutely.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Any additional questions, concerns, or issues? If not, Bart, will you call the roll?
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Ms. Carter?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Byrd?
Yes. Excellent. Moving to our next agenda item, a motion for review of the personal consent order. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
And Mark, you have the report this evening?
I do. Thank you. Dr. Kellogg, I wanted to get that right the first time tonight. President Byrd, members of the board, tonight's personal consent agenda is rather light in terms of personnel consent agendas. You will see a few resignations. There's a resignation and also some contractual status change for two teachers that are going to be job-sharing. We do have two retirements. The licensed retirement brings our total retirements to 11 for this year. We have some summer intervention employment, and some spring coaches that are on this agenda that we did not get on the last agenda. And then the summer schoolteachers that you see is just the beginning. So, we will have several more of those as we go along.
Any questions, concerns, or issues relative to the personnel consent order? Excellent. Thank you, Mark. Bart, if we can call the roll, please.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Ms. Carter?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Byrd?
Yes. Moving to our next agenda item, 9.01, final policy readings. If I can have a motion to approve, and then I will give a summary.
So moved.
Second.
Hearing a second, just a reminder that this is a final reading of Policy 5223, Absences for Religious Instruction. This policy was originally released in September of 2014 in response to legislation authorizing districts to adopt a policy permitting the release of students from school to attend a program of religious instruction. And revisions to the policy are offered in response to the expressed concerns regarding First Amendment rights of students and parents. Any questions regarding this policy? Excellent. If not, Bart, can you call the roll, please?
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Ms. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Byrd?
Yes. Our second motion for policy reading will be Policy 5340, Student Accidents. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
And I will read the summary of our final reading for Policy 5340, Student Accidents. This policy is recommended to be revised to reflect a change in the concussion protocol endorsed by the Ohio High School Athletic Association. Any questions, concerns, or issues? If not, Bart, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Ms. Carter?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Byrd?
Yes. Moving to 9.03, a final reading of Policy 8330, Relative to Student Records. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
And as a reminder, this final reading for Policy 8330 is related to proposed changes that came from NEOLAS to reflect new components of federal law. Additionally, the policy has been reviewed and streamlined by district legal counsel. And just a note, the suggested revision that has been made to reflect that persons or companies granted access to student records must be under the direct control of the board or its assigns with respect to the use and maintenance of education records. Our emphasis is on the board's assigns. Any questions, concerns, or issues? If not, Bart, can you call the roll, please?
Ms. Carter?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Byrd?
Yes. And our final, final reading, 9.04, Policy 8660, Transportation of Students by Private Vehicle. If I can have a motion, please?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
And as a reminder, our final reading tonight is of Policy 8660, Transportation of Students by Private Vehicle. This policy is revised in order to comply with the OAC 3301-83-19, which notes that non-conforming vehicles cannot be used to transport students routinely to and from school. ODE further explains that this rule does not regulate incidental use, only routine transport. Questions, concerns, or issues? If not, Bart, will you call the roll, please?
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Ms. Carter?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Byrd?
Yes. Excellent. That wraps up our policy final readings for the evening, and we move to Agenda Item 10, Recommended Action for Old Business. We have none this evening. Item 11, Recommended Action, New Business, first readings of two policies. As a reminder to our audience, we do not call for a motion or a vote on first readings, and we have 11.01, Policy 6144, related to investments. You have a report?
That's mine. This was given to us by NEOLAS, basically stating that this will conform with the new state law. So, it's nothing that we added or changed. Everything is in red. If you look at the policy, everything in red is the proposed language. It really just clarifies a lot of stuff, kind of defines a few things, but it's nothing that, nothing that we're not going to be conforming to. I mean, we're already complying to this. It's just a more of a better definition.
Excellent. Thanks, Bart. Any questions? All right, we'll move to 11.02, a first reading of Policy 7510, Use of District Premises.
Good evening, President Byrd, members of the board, Dr. Kellogg. Policy 7510, Use of District Premises, is reflective of changes in Ohio revised code that were amended by Ohio House Bill, I'm sorry, by House Bill 290 to replace all references to schoolhouses, facilities, and school grounds with the term "school premises." As you can see, reflective in the policy marked out in red, presented in blue, is the removal of grounds and facilities and changes to language "school premises." It's just housekeeping. Any questions? Nope?
Any questions at all? Excellent. Thank you for the report. Much appreciated. We'll move to Agenda Item 12, 12.01, A Resolution to Approve Admission and Waiver of Tuition for Foreign Exchange Students. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Excellent. We have two foreign exchange students, Javier, pardon me, Javier Pardo from Spain, and Marcus Jakobsen from Denmark. Any questions, issues, concerns? Hearing none? Bart, will you call the roll, please?
Ms. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Byrd?
Yes. Move to Agenda Item 12.02, Overnight and Out-of-State Field Trips. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
We have Westerville South High School Quad Match. Silly question, what sport is this for?
What's a quad match?
What's a quad match?
I don't know.
Looking at the number of kids, I want to guess it's tennis.
Tennis?
Oh.
14 students?
And match?
Yes.
Yeah. Look at you, smarty pants.
My contribution for the night.
Jeopardy?
I could be wrong.
Quidditch.
Oh, my goodness. All right.[1708.01][1708.01](laughing) Any questions or concerns? If not, Bart, call the roll, please.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Ms. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Byrd?
Yes. Yes. Moving to Public Comments, Agenda Item 13.01, and pleased to have Peg Duffy, please, come to the podium.
First, I would thank you for your summary on the public readings, that's just what I was looking for. All of you received from me a copy of last Friday's Dispatch editorial entitled "Win-Win Might Need Revision." Win-Win is a three decades old agreement. Just think of the changes that have occurred since 1986. Easton, Polaris, Dublin and Hilliard no longer are pastures or farmland. At the time Win-Win was crafted, Columbus schools agreed not to seize the students from territory previously annexed to the city of Columbus. They were more than satisfied to receive various commercial and personal property taxes from the city of Columbus suburban school district territory where businesses were sprouting up overnight. These commercial tax dollars offset Columbus's massive loss of students whose families were fleeing the Columbus system. Since 1986, many of these commercial taxes have been reduced or phased out. As the editorial points out, since 1986, with expanded housing options, suburban districts have become more urban with issues of, quote, "more students who live in poverty, are homeless, and need costly special services," unquote. Given the community and media interest, as well as the 30 years that have passed since the inception of Win-Win, it is incumbent upon this Board, pardon my pointing at you, this Board, to schedule public discussion before the May 31st deadline for the renewal of the six-year agreement. Don't just rubber stamp it again. Let's also remove from the discussion the fear that always seems to be raised by Attorney Jeff Rich. The baby, in this case, the suburban students, doesn't have to be thrown out with the bathwater. There are common sense ideas worth considering that could save our district thousands of dollars, which is your obligation to the taxpayers. The Win-Win students have always been ours, so why should we pay to serve what we own? As Representative Duffy from Worthington, not related in any way, Representative Duffy maintains amend Win-Win and plan now to sunset the agreement with the goal to provide stability for both homeowners as well as suburban districts. I encourage you to work with his office on those ideas. Remember that Reynoldsburg made changes and hasn't fallen off the face of the earth. This is not a matter for executive session or management decision. We have elected five Board members to represent us. We expect you to step up and hammer out your recommendations in time to work with the other eight suburban districts to bring Win-Win into the century. The editorial concludes with, quote, "Win-Win kept the peace, but it's time to consider whether mutual respect and cooperation is a better deal for the 21st century," end of quote.
Peg, thank you very much. Moving to Agenda Item 14.01, we're already to Board Comments this evening, so if I can start on this end, any comments this evening?
Yes, I do have some comments. I just wanted to share with the community that April is Child Abuse Prevention Month, and this Wednesday, April 13th, is Wear Blue Day to promote and support child abuse prevention. And then, of course, we talked about wearing red this month also. I'll just remind you to go ahead and wear red on Friday, April 22nd, to honor Coach Kallo and the Wildcat basketball team. Thank you.
My turn? A couple of things. Dr. Kellogg, at a recent meeting, we heard a great deal about math from some concerned students and concerned adults, and we posed several questions to you at that time. Do you have an update on where you might be as regards digging out the answers to those?
Yes, we, as we stated that evening, one of the actions we were taking was to develop a survey to all of our secondary math teachers at 6th through 12th grade. And so we, we developed that survey in conjunction with our department facilitators, they helped them craft the design of that. That was distributed before spring break through last week. We have the raw data back, and the direction next is we're working with department facilitators this week to have them analyze the raw data for us to kind of present what they see as findings and what they think may be logical next steps. So it's not administration's goal to review the data and make those assumptions, it's our goal to facilitate the process with the department facilitators and with the classroom teachers over the next couple of weeks. So I would hope to have that process completed here in the next couple of weeks, and then we can provide the Board an update as to where the teachers are in terms of next steps. I know there was also requests through that evening about parent input and, and student input in that process. We'll put that on the docket for consideration as we're talking with department facilitators as well. So we'll have that, the analysis of that data coming up. I also did provide the grade data and some of the research that I provided to the Board in the past, and I cited that evening, that was provided back to the building principals so that they could review that data and that information with their department and department facilitators, and they've been going through that as well to get feedback from teachers on their impressions of some of that.
Good, I'm very glad to hear that, and I'm very glad to hear the extensive teacher engagement in that, that's very important. Another point, shifting from math, and shifting from you. As regards Win-Win, it's always appropriate to look at the numbers with Win-Win, and I count very heavily on Bart's understanding of those numbers and where they are, and he has provided good information about that in the past, and will do so again. Couple of things that I wanted to point out. The editorial talked about, you know, boundaries and mutual respect and cooperation, and I hesitate to sound a bit cynical, but I am going to sound a bit cynical, because when we didn't have Win-Win, a whole lot of kids who were once part of this district were removed from this district as politicians and various individuals with other agenda chose to shift our boundaries, and there was little if anything to do about it. Whenever anything occurs as regards our boundaries, it's extremely incumbent upon us to pay really close attention, and anything that would cause our boundaries to be weakened is something that I would significantly oppose and vociferously oppose as well. I don't trust the vagaries of politics. I know, I'm elected, but I don't trust the vagaries of politics when I see what has happened to school boundaries. You know, and even in the past, you know, few months, and very recently, in our district, we have seen some boundary requests come forward, and thus far, we have the ability, in large part because of Win-Win oftentimes, to do what we need to do to protect the students who attend this district and to keep them in this district where, where they have been, as Peg was saying. With Reynoldsburg, we did indeed, all of us who participated in Win-Win, voted to allow Reynoldsburg to withdraw from the agreement because Reynoldsburg, Reynoldsburg's portion of affected territory was so small that it didn't really make sense for Reynoldsburg to remain in it. We are not in that position in this district or in many of the other Win-Wins. So it always needs looked at, it always needs evaluated, and a lot of it deals with how much do we want to protect what is ours?
Excellent, thank you. Tracy, any comments this evening?
Yep. So yesterday at Westerville North High School, Westerville Partners for Education hosted Starry Night, and it was phenomenal, it was huge turnout, the, the school was packed. So I want to thank that group for putting that amazing program on for, for our community. In addition to that, I want to bring to the attention that we had so many teachers there volunteering and kind of helping out, and, and I want to throw a thank you out to them, so thank you for, for coming and helping with that. In addition to Starry Night, they also do a Stars in the Park at the Westerville Rec Soccer Fields, and that's coming up on April 16th, and the Columbus, Columbus Astronomy Society will be there with telescopes, so go and check that out. Thank you to the kiddos tonight and the reflections, that was a lot of fun, and Coach Kallo and the other coaches and the team, and then to whoever gave us these awesome cookies for autism awareness, we appreciate that, and absolutely, we are always aware, so, so thank you. That's it.
Excellent, thank you. The only comments that I have this evening are in reference to Coach Kallo. Just, I, I think we lose sight of the fact, we're, we're celebrating a championship, we lose sight of the fact that, that Coach Kallo, the coach comes with that, that other part of what he does. He's a teacher, he's an educator, he has been a tremendous value to the community in that role alone. And I think what I find absolutely amazing about Coach Kallo is he is in that bracket of, you know, the 12 most humble human beings I've ever met in my life. He, he's uncomfortable with recognition, he's uncomfortable with being singled out, he, he sees himself as a part of a team, and, and his character, his integrity, and that humility are just what I think we should look to as a community in terms of, of the value he represents to all of us here in Westerville. So, that being said, move to dates and times and locations of our next meeting. The Board will meet in special session on Monday, April the 18th, 2016, at North High School for the JAM Awards, and for a regular session on Monday, April the 25th, and Monday, May the 9th, 2016, at 6:00 PM at the Early Learning Center, 9th 36 East Wind Drive, Westerville. That being said, may I call for a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Bart, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Ms. Cotter?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Byrd?
Yes, we are adjourned, thank you, everyone.